Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the city of Moreno Valley. Today is January the fifteenth and it's about 5:45 PM. Our first order of business is a presentation, Business Spotlight for Baskin Robbins. And Councilwoman Carla Thornton will present.
Good evening, everyone. So, Baskin Robbins is a family-oriented company with humble beginnings. The company started in 1945 with two brothers-in-law who had a vision decided to open a location that would provide customers a different flavor for every month, which is how they got the name Thirty-One Flavors. Located at 12190 Paris Boulevard, patrons can expect to walk into a friendly atmosphere with forty-eight different flavors of ice cream to choose from. With the variety of options, customers are sure to find what they're looking for. Some favorite items at the Moreno Valley Lake location include Banana Royale and the world-famous Banana Split. Today, we recognize Baskin Robbins with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
At Baskin Robbins, you can try any of our forty-eight delicious flavors. To find the scoop that's right for you, our specialty drinks, cones, and desserts are always a treat. Make every occasion a celebration with our amazing ice cream cakes. You customize it, we prepare it. Add some flavor to your day at Baskin Robbins.
Representing the business tonight is Operations Director, Mr. Steve Zife. Would you please join me at the mic? Hi, sir. Yeah, it's my pleasure to present the Business Spotlight certificate and DVD to Baskin Robbins. Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, yeah, I'll just say a couple of quick things. Thank you, the video looks great, I really appreciate it. You know, I've been with Baskin Robbins for fifteen years and I've opened stores all over the country, or helped open stores all over the country with different cities. And I honestly can tell you, I've never had a city like Moreno Valley that has taken the interest and supports the small business like you guys do, and goes out of their way to do things like the video and other things that you've done already since we've been open, to help the small business and especially us, in our case, be successful. And I really, truly appreciate it. It's really, really nice to see a city do that, and I mean that with the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our second order of business is Business Spotlight for Moreno Valley Family Donuts. Moreno Valley Family Donuts is a family-owned establishment with a goal of providing the best customer service and highest-quality foods. Located at 24-541 Alessandro Boulevard, customers can expect to find giant donuts, maple bacon, heart-shaped donuts, along with freshly-made classics and coffee. Moreno Valley Family Donuts has been in town for nearly thirty years. So, when the owners decided to buy the Alessandro location ten years ago, they wanted to keep the original atmosphere and design that customers had come to recognize and love. The owners are longtime residents of Moreno Valley and love being able to give back to their community. Today, we recognize Moreno Valley Family Donuts with this Business Spotlight. Please roll the video.
Wake up with Moreno Family Donuts. Enjoy a quality cup of coffee, a delightful pastry, or any of our delicious breakfast or lunch sandwiches. And stop by anytime for a huge variety of freshly-prepared donuts, from tasty traditionals to our renowned specialty donuts. Great service, great prices, great donuts. Moreno Family Donuts.
Thank you. Representing the business tonight is the owner, Nitra Bai. Would you please join us at the mic? Okay, here's your certificate from the council, the city council, the city of Moreno Valley. And here's a flash drive with the video you just saw. You can put on your Facebook page, Instagram, website, anywhere you want. So, congratulations. So, would you like to say some words?
Sorry, um, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity for this day, and thank you, our mayor, that made this video. I'm very honored to be here and thank you for support our small business. And he had something to say.
Well, we've been here about, this is going on about twelfth or thirteenth year right now. We've been with Moreno Valley, I mean, through the up and downs, and currently, we're very happy where the city's headed, and we're looking forward to bigger things in future.
Thank you so much. We'll take a picture.
Thank you so much.
Wow, we just keep growing and growing. So, let's give Baskin Robbins and Family Donuts another round of applause. The following presentation is a recognition of Rancho Verde Crimson Regiment, which Councilwoman Thornton will present.
Tonight, we would like to recognize the Rancho Verde Crimson Regiment for their tireless dedication and commitment. Thanks to their hard work and dedication, the Rancho Verde Crimson Regiment was invited to march at the 2020 Rose Parade. This is an amazing honor, not only for the band, but also to Rancho Verde High School, Valverde Unified School District, and the city of Moreno Valley. We would also like to thank Mr. Hanglock Hatook Band Director for his commitment, contributions, and dedication in making the march band a true success. In honor of the hard work that these young men and women dedicated to their band, and in celebration of their achievement in marching in the Rose Parade, we would like to present them with the Certificate of Recognition. If you can please come forward. Here you go.
Thank you so much.
Yes. How are you doing? Congratulations, congratulations. Oh. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Hanglock Hatook, I'm the Band Director for Rancho Verde High School, and I've been there for sixteen years. And the Rose Parade will be marching January first, 2020. A thousand bands usually apply every year, and we will be representing the West Coast, United States, in the parade that year. So, we'll be the, you'll see our sign, Rancho Verde High School, with City of Moreno Valley below it, coming down the street on January first, 2020. Behind me is a couple of drum majors, Natalie Cosios, Lizbeth Rios, I don't know, Isabel Patzamion, our Band President, Lourdes Bejarano, and Vice President Jacob Flores. So, thank you, thank you so much.
Should we double up a little bit?
Sure. There you go.
Congratulations. I'm on a roll tonight. Okay, we have another one.
All right, next is the final presentation, and it's a proclamation recognizing Safe Surrender Awareness Month, presented by Councilwoman Thornton.
Tonight, we would like to call to attention safely surrendered baby law, which was first created in January 2001. The safely surrendered baby law was signed permanently into state law in January 2006 as a response to the growing issue of newborn infant deaths due to abandonment in unsafe locations. Under the Safe Surrender Baby Law, a parent or person with lawful custody who feel that they are unable to care for an infant may surrender the child to any designated safe surrender location within the first seventy-two hours of the child's life. Following the surrender, parents have a fourteen-day grace period during which they may reclaim a surrendered baby. After the fourteen-day period has ended, Child Welfare Services will find an adoptive home for the surrendered child. Many surrenders occur in the hospital immediately following the birth of the child, which allows hospital staff to counsel the surrendering parent on all of their options besides surrendering the baby. Within the first fifteen years, Safe Surrender Baby Law caused an eighty percent decrease in the occurrence of infant abandonment. In order to spread awareness of this important and highly-successful program, the City Council of the city of Moreno Valley hereby proclaims Safe Surrender Awareness Month, February 2019, whereas California, like many states, has enacted the safely surrendered baby law, which allows a parent to legally, confidentially, safely give up a baby within the first seventy-two hours of the baby's life, and whereas this law is designed to protect a baby from being unsafely and illegally abandoned and to offer a last resort to parents who, in a time of severe emotional distress, may believe they have no other options. The hope is that by allowing parents to legally surrender a child to an employee at a fire station, they will do so ensuring the child's safety and their own freedom from prosecution. And whereas all City of Moreno Valley fire stations are designated as safe surrender sites and staff with firefighters, paramedics, who are capable of providing emergency medical care of newborns. Whereas California's safely surrendered baby law allows parents to confidentially give up their baby seventy-two hours or younger. As long as the baby has not been abused or neglected, parents may give up their newborn without fear of arrest or prosecution. And whereas the law guarantees confidentiality to the surrendering adult, a parent who safely surrenders a baby does not have to give her name. If a parent chooses to give her name or other identifying information, only individuals who need to know the identity and whereabouts of a surrendering parent will have access to such information, thus guaranteeing confidentiality. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizenry staff, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2019 as a Safe Surrender Awareness Month. Here to accept this proclamation is Fire Marshal Adria Reiner-Stunt from the Moreno Valley Fire Department. Hi. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, it's just a couple of words. I think Councilmember Thornton said all there was to say about the program, and I just want to, on behalf of Chief Ahmad and Chief Leeg, who are on a fire assignment this evening, and the rest of the Moreno Valley Fire Department, thank you for recognizing Safe Surrender Awareness Month, and...
Thank you.
You guys, come up here. Come on, guys. Chief's gonna want a picture.
Thank you so much, and let's give another round of applause to the Rancho Verde Crimson Regiment and our first responders. Thank you so much. That concludes our special presentations. The regular city council meeting will reconvene in about five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the city council, the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City of Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting on January fifteenth, 2019, to order at 6:08 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Rafael Burguerras. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Dr. Reverend Mark Chrome from Mark Chrome Ministries.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand, put your hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for having a successful year in 2018. During this first city council meeting of 2019, we come before you this evening with praise and thanksgiving for the blessings you bestowed upon Moreno Valley and will continue to bestow. We believe and receive your grace, mercy, and favor, and we pray for all people in positions of authority everywhere, but more specifically within this city, for the mayor to the crossing guards protecting our citizens. Now, we seek your wisdom and guidance in the decisions needing to be made here tonight, that those decisions will be in accordance with your will for the city of Moreno Valley. We call for all the words of criticism and negativism to fall to the floor and have no effect on your will coming to pass within this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Chrome. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton?
Here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Mayor Protembaka?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Cabrera's absent.
Okay, staff introductions, please.
Pat Hakesnare, City Clerk.
Angel Miga, Executive Assistant to the Mayor and City Council.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Patty Evans, Planning Official.
Dave Lilliver, Acting Police Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Great, thank you. We do have, if you're open or if you need any Spanish translation services, we do have that in the back as a service. Before we hear public comments, I do ask that we be civil to each other and that we be respectful to anyone that's speaking at the podium as well. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip and go ahead and hand it to our bailiff. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during the public comments, but after, during closing comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on non-agenda items?
Yes, sir, two. Victoria Chafee and Tom Jarrell, Sr.
Okay, if those two could please come up, please. Yeah, oh, yes, to the podium.
Good evening, thank you for having. Dr. Thornton, I appreciate you answering my email a few weeks ago, and this is the first time I've ever done a city council meeting, but I feel my father's looking down on me because he graced the city council many years ago. My name is Victoria Chafee. My husband and I, Bill, have lived and had a home here in Moreno Valley for over twenty years. My parents have lived here for more than forty, and my dad, Joe Morris, worked on the general plan for the city of Moreno Valley before we became a city in 1984. We're here tonight to ask that why, after twenty years of living in Moreno Valley, we and two of our neighbors are now being subjected to code-enforced landscaping directives. Our homes from Iowa North to Gregory have all been built in the sixties, and every home has something different in the front yard. As we do, we have hard-packed, clean dirt until we can afford to do a project that we just got approved by code. We're doing this a little bit at a time, and when code wants it completed by March first, we said, "We need more time to do this." It's very expensive to do all of these plans that we had to have approved. We took out the grass to conserve water, put turf in, and somebody stole it. There you go. So, we've been trying a little bit at a time to get our yard ready to do this, and the state's still asking us to conserve water. Why should we have to plant more trees and more plants in our yard when we're not, when we are trying to conserve water, and we're still in a drought, according to the state that I just heard today on the news? More time needs to be given to comply with plans, reviews of project every ninety days, and twelve months to complete. Doesn't sound like it's too much to ask. We feel as do the neighbors that code enforcement is bordering on a little bit of harassment. Did you know that palm trees aren't allowed to be planted in your front yards? How many of you have got palm trees in your yards or in your neighbor's yard? There you go. There are certain shrubs that you have to plant, certain trees that you have to plant, and where you have to have them planted. Code enforcement's being very reactive and not very proactive. Economics have changed. We're all trying to conserve water as water prices go up. Lifestyles have changed, everybody's living in their backyards now. No one plays or works in their front yard very often. County or state laws sometimes assert city laws. We feel that as the oldest neighbor in the city, and as well as all the thousands of people living in the city, that codes need to be redefined over time, and it needs to mesh with the lifestyle and the economics that we're all facing at this point in our lives. Our city's growing, we need to have some codes out there, but we also need to be fair to everyone that's out there. I just want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Chafee, Schaff?
Chafee.
Chafee, okay. So, you're in District Two, I believe? Okay, so, okay, thank you so much. We have Tom Gerald. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Protembaka, council members, members of the staff and the public both there in the chambers and watching at home, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's good to be able to get here early enough to talk a little bit. By the way, the previous speaker, her dad, Joe Morris, was on the General Plan Committee for the first, about the first two years of the city, and so I remember him well. We used to meet on Friday nights because we had eighteen-member committee, and so any night, everybody could get together, so, you know, old memories. But the reason I asked to speak tonight was good ideas, and good ideas can come from a myriad of sources. And what I want to encourage you, council, to do is, it's not so much where an idea comes from, it's whether or not it has good merit. Councilmember Marquez shared with me an idea some months ago about being able to increase our reserve deputy sheriffs' presence in the city. I think it's an excellent idea. I know it's been tried before, going way back to the nineties and early two thousands, a guy named Herb Wright, who was an incredible volunteer and did a lot of work with the PD and a number of departments in the city, had a good plan. He was a retired air, sorry, Marine Colonel, so he knew what he was talking about, very sharp guy. I think he had done something like seven thousand hours donated to the city, so, proof was in the pudding. Bluntly, the union wasn't too receptive to it, so I hope maybe with the new sheriff, maybe we can work something out. That's a good idea. Another good idea, and it didn't get traction, but when Councilman Guybit came up the idea for the annexation, you know, somebody's gonna grab that land, and the question is, do we want it or do we want somebody else doing something with it? And, you know, we have roughly seventeen thousand acres of some of the most beautiful viewshed properties in Southern California, and, you know, they'll very easily command very, very high-priced homes, and that's an element of housing that's really missing in this community. That will bring up all housing elements, and as I said, will provide mentors for our children, provide people to contribute to our charities, and, you know, shop in our stores and our restaurants and so on and so forth, so as well, may become future community leaders. So, you know, just a couple of things I wanted to share with you, and I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and it's good to be able to spend some time with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Rafael Burguerras, Ben Burton, and Jeanette Burton.
How many more speakers, City Clerk, because I thought you said two.
Yes, and then we got three more speakers left.
Okay, are there any more speakers?
Good evening, man, council members, staff, residents, and guests. We had a wonderful 2018. Things got done, the city's growing, the developers are keeping their promises, they're building up the corners, houses, businesses. So, hopefully that 2019, hopefully, I believe that 2019 will be just like 2018, we're gonna move forward, okay? That's the vision for Moreno Valley. I also want to bring up the Soaring magazine again. Victoria did that last year, but I'm gonna bring it up again because we had our first meeting two weeks ago with Patty, the staff, and the commissioners. And when you have it in front of you, like I do, you can really see what's going on, and they have a new event, for those that like running. There's gonna be a 5K run, March ninth, at the March Reserve Base. For the first time, you can be able to go over there and give you your all, five miles, I mean, 5K, I mean, I can't do it no more, but for those that can, and also at nine o'clock, the kids could be partaker of that. So, for those that got the magazine last month, it's a four-month magazine, look at it, it's brand-new, it's shiny, you can see it real good in the light, okay? Another thing they did, we don't have that recycled paper anymore, so they did something new to the inside, so you don't get that ink anymore on your fingers when you turn the pages. So, we've done a lot of work to make this a really, truly, family-oriented city, and I want to thank the staff for doing that for us, because they work hard at it. Patty and the staff worked very, very hard for us. And I also want to thank Holland Fairview, because they did something fantastic on Christmas Day. They were able to bring music, gifts, and a hot dinner to a hundred and thirty seniors. Because I was able to look at the report, I was able to see the picture and read what they did. Many people like to attack Holland Fairview. I say you need to stop that, because they're not the enemy of our city. They are one of a few that donate their time, their money, and their family for others to be able to prevail in our city. I know there's a lot of people that dislike them, but this year, we're going to kind of attack that, because that's not fair, that they try to confuse new residents about the generosity of Holland Fairview and their staff and many organizations. That needs to stop in 2019, and I'm gonna do my best to stop that.
Thank you, Rafael. Next two speakers is Ben Burton, followed by Jeanette Burton. Good evening, Ben.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Burton, my wife, Jeanette Burton, we are small business owners here in Moreno Valley of a... We are small business owners here in Moreno Valley of J. Burton Photography and Antiques and Collectibles, and we've been residents here in Moreno Valley for over twenty years. On about five fifteen PM, Saturday, January twelfth, on Sixth Street near March Air Reserve Base in here in Moreno Valley, the vehicle that I was driving was a subject of a felony vehicle traffic stop. This incident consisted of several weapons being drawn and pointed at us about, I estimated, about ten or more police officers and about, I think around seven or more police vehicles, I estimate. So my wife and the legal registered owner of the vehicle was the driver's side passenger, and my brother-in-law was the rear passenger. One by one, we were all ordered to step out of the vehicle, get down on our knees. We were handcuffed, and we were put in the back of Moreno Valley Police Department vehicles while our vehicle was searched. We were detained for, I think, about thirty minutes, and then we were let go. So we filed a complaint with the investigators at the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, which is currently in progress, being investigated. I have spoken to the investigator since that was assigned to the complaint several times, I think, two, maybe three. Because he wanted to keep me, keep me informed and updated of the progress. Last update I received was that the police dispatcher, the dispatch center, wherever that's located at, made a mistake in verifying our vehicle as a vehicle that had been reported as stolen. And this was after the officers, and I'm not sure which ones, had called in our license plate to verify. And according to the investigator, it was called in once or maybe twice for verification. And the verification given by the dispatch was that it was our vehicle when it wasn't. And so, uh, so we would just like to take this time to make sure that, you know, for one thing, awareness. Wasn't a happy experience. Wasn't anything that I'd been through before, you know? I'm a military veteran, twenty-seven years in the Marine Corps retired. And so we would just like, you know, in the end, that if the investigation hasn't concluded yet, that someone figure out how it was that this mistake was actually made by the dispatch office and take the appropriate steps to make sure that it does not happen again, or the likelihood of it happening again is like almost zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton, and we will definitely research that. And you did say it's on Sixth Street?
Sixth Street, yes.
On Sixth Street?
Over by the, across from the Congress.
March Air Force Base? Yes, okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Jeanette Burton, the owner of Burton Photography and Brooks Antiques and Collectibles, and I want to follow up with what my husband said. What happened to us was, I'm going to put it briefly, terrifying. Having guns, assault weapons, and a K-9 unit tell you to step out of your vehicle, and having someone tell you, you know, that possibly that your husband can be shot is not an experience that I want to experience. We were slated, we were coming back from the Clippers game. We were going to bring my son, who was on the autism spectrum. The possibility of having your family shot is not something that I want to experience. We hadn't done anything. My vehicle is clearly marked with my company logo on it. I'm, we're here today to make sure, because something in the system is wrong. And I mean extremely wrong. My husband, my brother, and myself are veterans. We have lived here in Moreno Valley twenty-five years, and we're here to make sure that somehow there's a better checks and balance system in the system. Because we could not be, it's a possibility that we could not have been standing here today. Ten officers, seven police cars surrounded us. And I'm here because we care. Because my children could have been without their parents. And we're here to make sure that every person, mayor, council members, I'm thankful to Mr. Marquez because we reached out to him. But everyone should be accountable. The city should be accountable. Dispatch should be accountable. It should make a difference. Because we should not have been a possibility of being a statistic. Because of an accident, it makes a difference. And mayor, I'm holding you accountable because you run the city. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will clarify. I'm going to ask for information about it. My understanding, though, if it is Sixth Street, that's JPA. But we'll, we'll research that information and county as well, because we don't have a dispatch as a city. It's county, county-based. But we'll research it. Thank you. All right. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendars. Sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. On one of the items, let me see here, it's A nine, which is council, commission, board, and task force participation appointments, the mayoral appointments. There's just a couple of little clerical corrections that just need to be made for the RCTC. Oh, is it eight-ten? Okay, I have here. No, it's A nine. It's A nine. It shows A nine. Just a couple clerical corrections here. One of them, for RCTC, I'm going to appoint Mayor Potembaka to be the primary and Thornton to be the alternate. And then RCTC.
Sorry, we have, we have two different versions of the agenda. The one on the system doesn't match the one on the table, so we're trying to figure out which is which.
It's, it's the mayoral appointments. Thanks. A nine. And then for RTA, there should be a correction. It should still have Councilmember Marquez on there as the primary, and then Councilmember Cabrera will be the alternate for the RTA. Okay? And so I have that as one whole slate. All right. Oh, well, we have to do a public comments first. But, uh, any, any public comments on the consent items?
Yes, sir, we have Rafael Burguera.
Okay. Any other ones?
That's the only one so far.
Good evening again, Mayor, council, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. Eight-eight, um, is part of my committee. We finally got a contractor to start, after all the approvals and the signing and all that, to be able to start building the skateboard park. So, is, is it, okay. I'm hoping that you would say ten, but I, okay. So, so if it gets approved tonight and everything goes well, ninety working days, okay, not counting weekends, rainy days, and holidays, it will be built between ninety days and four months from the day everything's signed and the shovel goes into the, into the ground. So that's a good thing. So hopefully, everything gets done in the next few months, and then hopefully by the summer, the park will be up and running for the kids and the adults, because there's a lot of adults that also skateboard that I realize that when I see them in the streets. Eight-ten, or eight-nine. I wish everyone, all the blessings and the luck when you go to the committees in behalf of the city of Moreno Valley. We expect you to come back and report to us on, on everything, you know, because that's important to us, what's going on. B-five, the landscaping maintenance service, and Santiago to name the park. But I'm going to touch a little bit about B-five. And I thank Michael Wolfie for bringing it to the, to the, to the agenda, the item. Because when I read through it, something was forgotten in the seventeen, eighteen budget of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. And now it's going to be in the nineteen-twenty budget if you approve it tonight. And that's to fix and complete some work in District Two. Some gardening or maintenance that hasn't not been done yet that needs to be completed. So I'm glad that, that two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars is going to go to District Two to finish up some work up there that they need done. So I'm glad for that that came up. You know, she promised that it would do well for her district, things like that, District Two. You know, that's important, that, you know, your approval tonight will help your district complete some work that, that needs to be completed. So that's, that's important, that for your district and for me to see, because I've been up there campaigning, so I know your district very well. I know everybody up there, all the hills, I mean, it's everything, and all the horses and everything that's up there. And I'm glad that I do the campaigning, because that's how I know my city, you know? And I'm happy for them that this is finally going to get done. So anyway, have fun in your commissions and boards and report back to us. Thank you.
Thanks, Rafael. Okay, so we did have a motion by Councilmember Marquez to approve the consent calendar. It's second by Councilmember Thornton. Okay, please vote. And we could do a voice vote as well. And it's approved unanimously. We'll move straight to public hearing items. We have public hearing for one National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System mail ballot proceeding. Report to Public Works Department. Michael.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potembaka, members of the council. As indicated, this is one of our routine public hearings. This is for our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System ballot proceedings. We'll call it MPDS for the rest of the night, if you don't mind. So this is the MPDS parcel, parcel charge for a development project. So as developers go through the approval process, they're conditioned to identify a funding source for the MPDS requirements. This developer's chosen to go through the ballot process. This will affect one property owner, which is three parcels. The project is a three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot industrial building near the intersection of Paris and Nandina. Our recommendation for tonight for the council is to hold the public hearing and absent any compelling testimony, go ahead and close the public hearing. Recommend that council approve the action to conduct the ballot process and then accept the results as the ballots are opened up. And if a yes vote, go ahead and set the rate as defined in the staff report and also on the ballot. So that concludes my report and available for questions.
Thank you so much, Director Wolf. And any council questions of staff? Go ahead and press your button if you have any questions. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Okay, any public testimony?
Yes, sir, we have two people, Ben Cumming-Burton and Jeanette Burton.
No, okay, they said no, not for this one. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. All right, we'll go ahead, make a motion to direct the city clerk to open and count.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Thornton. Okay, please vote. And again, this is just so that way she can count. Okay, so city clerk, we'll give you a moment if you want to go ahead and count those.
Yes, one ballot, yes vote.
Okay, that was easy. All right, so we'll go ahead and receive and file the official tally sheet with the city clerk's office. So we'll go ahead and make a motion to verify and accept the results. Okay, Councilmember Marquez, second by Councilmember Thornton, to accept the results and go ahead and vote. All right, great. Item F leads us straight to reports. We'll go straight to March Joint Powers Commission, Mayor Potembaka. We are at March Joint Powers Commission.
I don't have an update, but I just want to announce that I was nominated and elected to be the vice chair of the March Joint Powers Authority.
Congratulations. And for the Riverside, well, you probably haven't met with these because they've been, okay, so the Riverside, the RCTC, you, there's no, no meeting, right? Oh, okay. Yeah, because there was a break, so WR Cog. Councilmember Marquez, you don't have it?
Uh, no, it's, yeah, it was a break.
All right, so city ma, so I don't know why the, okay. So city managers' report?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potembaka, members of the council. The first thing I'd like to, to discuss very quickly is we've looked into the issue brought forth by Mr. and Mrs. Burton tonight. Obviously, we're very concerned about the experience that they had. Could be quite frightening, we understand that. Our acting police chief has confirmed that that felony stop occurred in the March JPA area, not in the, not in a portion of the city. And just for the public's benefit, the March Joint Powers Authority contracts directly with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department for provision of police services there. So I just wanted to, to, and our city attorney.
And they have their own board and their.
Exactly, that is not a, that is not, not associated with the city in any way, although we are very sympathetic for what, what they experienced, of course. Yes, and, and the Burtons were just informed of that by our city attorney. Happy New Year. With tonight's agenda being brief, my comments will also be very, very brief. Just wanted to reassure the council and the public that our teams are, have taken the preparations needed for the inclement weather headed our way, particularly on Thursday. We have resupplied our sandbag, sands and sandbag supplies. Our department operating center and emergency operating center are on standby and are ready to spring into action should, should the need arise. And I'll conclude with some really exciting news. We found out yesterday that Moreno Valley was named a two thousand and nineteen top workplace by Inland Empire Magazine. Yeah, that's pretty amazing. Those of us who work here know that it's a top workplace, and it's great to be recognized by Inland Empire Magazine. So please expect us to make a big deal of this in the, in the weeks ahead. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Potembaka, council members. I'm going to keep mine very brief. Happy New Year, looking forward to a great year, continuing to do what we're doing. Thank you.
And that leads us to public comments. We'll start off with Councilmember Thornton. I mean, not public comments, closing comments.
I just wanted to say Happy New Year. I'm so happy to be here and be back and getting to work and working with constituents and whether they're residents or business, businesses in our, our city. And I'll keep my comments brief, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back. I was gone for a while. Yeah, I was ill. I was in the hospital for, for a while. But I feel good now, back one hundred percent. And I want to thank all the individuals that called and kept calling, and they're still calling me. I'm doing fine now, and thank you for their, for everybody's concern. Secondly, this past week, I was in Sacramento. Secondly, um this past week, I was in Sacramento, um it was very important that one of us went up there, I'll tell you why, with our new governor, his number one priority is affordable housing, state of California. He had promised, and I don't know if you did see his speech, but he had promised that he will give cities money for affordable housing to assist, and I believe he will, because we did speak to several senators, represent, and assemblymen while we were up there, and they had indicated to us that this governor will assist local cities with affordable housing. He's also concerned, and the second priority is homelessness. He wants to work closely with the nonprofit groups, and I know that Salvation Army is one of our, our um organizations that we work with on homelessness, and I hope that Marshall maybe we can uh later on, look into other organizations to help us with that, and i-if it's true that the governor will assist us on financing, um that'd be some extra money coming in, so that, that's something that I'll, I'll follow up on also. The third priority is public safety, and we all know that in public safety, it's hard, very hard to hire policemen these days. Back when I was a policeman, we didn't have cameras, videos, or your phones recording action out there. I'm not saying that we did anything wrong, but, you know, we didn't have somebody watching over our back like they do now. I wouldn't want to be a policeman these days, it's, there's no way. But these cameras that these officers have on them, a lot of officers don't like it, a lot of officers like it. The governor says he will support public safety, and he will assist local police departments and county and state agencies to help him with, with the programs, um cameras. I know it's hard, and, and last night at, at our, our meeting, um our new sheriff, Chad Bronco, had said that um he's going to um, to work with us, city as a whole, in improving our, our public safety. And Tom and I had a discussion today about the comments I made last night, and did, did he say we'll have a new chief announced, Tom?
Uh, not a new police chief for Moreno Valley, there will be other communities where police chiefs will be appointed this week, uh as well as uh chief deputy assignments will be uh announced.
So with, with the state and the governor helping us out, and our local um police here, I, I think we're on the right track, so I, I wanna say a shout out to Tom, um go out there, Tom, let's get somebody to run the city, public safety-wise, um and that's all I have to say tonight, thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Well, it's good to be back, I know that everyone is fresh like lettuce and ready to roll out 2019, Happy New Year to everybody, um I know that uh 2019's gonna be a lot better than 2018, which was a good year. I want to welcome our interim police chief, Dave Lealier, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate and taking care of us, taking care of our fine young men and women at the police force. Um today, um I want to announce that uh we welcomed our newly-elected sheriff, Chad Bianco, and his first stop, his first city, the best city, he stopped here in Moreno Valley, and I want to thank um Councilwoman Thornton and our mayor, Gutierrez, for um the nice reception we had for him, and we're all looking forward to the great things that are coming to our city and to Riverside County with our, our new sheriff, and uh thanks to staff for a fabulous welcome to him, and uh we opened the doors to the sheriff, and we tell him, City Hall is yours, Moreno Valley is yours, and welcome, and I know that um like everything else, 2019 will be a fabulous year, so thank you staff, keep up the good work, uh you're doing a good job, and uh we have our upper echelon here, but our worker bees, they make us shine, so keep up the good work and thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Baca. I do also want to wish uh all of the residents and everyone that's here uh tonight a Happy New Year as well, uh we're finally back uh from the break and uh we're ready to hit the ground running, and we're definitely gonna be moving uh Moreno Valley forward, especially with a lot of initiatives, uh we have the uh new amphitheater that's gonna be coming out, uh with construction going underway, also um our skate park as well, that obviously the final touches were just approved uh tonight uh for our youth, so just a lot of opportunities for um our residents, uh we're gonna be working on a town center as well, I know last Saturday, there were a lot of uh folks uh from the community that came to a town hall community meeting uh to uh voice their opinion about it, uh off of um Nathan Boulevard and, and Cottonwood, between Cottonwood and Alessandro, and so that's gonna be a major uh priority of mine as well. I do also want to uh let the folks know that uh in the next, we're gonna be opening up the budget process, and it's a two-year process, and um that we want to create uh the budget, and so we do have an interactive tool, uh that you can actually um provide your input and give us that information and send it along uh our way as well. So again, I just wanna um wish everyone a Happy New Year, I want to say uh welcome Acting Commander Levalier? Yes, okay, Acting Commander Levalier uh for uh being here with us uh as well and, and leading uh the public safety component, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn uh this meeting at 6, uh what is it, 46 PM?